Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Krishani.
Here.
Mr. Cosel.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Yeah.
Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mr. Jardina.
Here.
Mr. Artusa.
Here.
Mr. Kine.
Okay, before we get started, this is being our first meeting of the year, we're meeting in an organizational meeting. I was appointed as chair of the, uh, the meeting committee. We need to make a motion to appoint a vice chairman, so I want to do that.
I'm gonna have to make Dave Malta for a vice chairman.
Second. Uh, David.
Hi. Thank you.
And we need our secretary.
I'm gonna need Dave Verena.
Motion for Dave Verena? Okay.
I'll second.
Motion for the second? Or the third?
I, I.
We'll point out a journey. Okay, guess what, I'll second that. If this is going for another season here, um... Okay, what would go again and get started with the first application? Is somebody here for that, for Bunce's?
Bunce's sign in?
Okay.
Bunce's sign is located at two-two-three-five Empire Boulevard. At the consent Josh Palmer of Vital Signs requesting sign approval to allow color changes to existing building mounted signs and existing monument signs. In addition of the second building mounted sign, Bunce's neighborhood food and drink out of two-point-oh-nine acre parcel located in an MC media and fancy commercial district of the Golden Tower, Webster.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, actually. Um, my name is Steve Stanley here and I'm Josh Palmer. As John stated, we are applying to change, to add the second building mounted sign with the orange faces, change out the red faces on the other side of the building there, the existing sign, and then change out the Bunce's red and swap out, uh, to show the, um, orange letters of Bunce's. Not changing any signs on the, not changing any size to that monument sign, just simply putting a new face in, little different colors.
Jeff, is there a question with the size, by the way?
Uh, no, it can form some of the size, uh, they will need to only get approval for the additional building mounted sign. They're scheduled to appear before that next week.
Do they, uh, put the number, the address on the monument or the monument sign there?
I believe the monument will stay as-is.
Well, you said they were just changing up the colors instead.
Correct. We will just be changing the, the monument, uh, pan or insert that you see in there will be changed, it will be simply changing the colors on the monument sign that's there, and then changing the red faces, the red face for the building mounted sign to orange, and then adding the secondary building mounted sign.
And that monument sign, so if it's a new color going in, will they put the address on there, is it thirty-five?
It could be done, yes, very easily.
So people are going down the street there, getting buried where they're at.
It helps in the commercial area, people are driving down and even if they're not looking to move, they may deal with it for two-forty-five, at least they got an idea where they're at. I mean, I've been lost going down, I'm looking at any number I can find, you know, in the commercial area a lot of the time.
I agree.
So we can do that, so I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else, anybody? Nothing? Everybody who likes the sign. Everybody who likes Bunce's, right? You have the secret, you have the secret, right? Yeah?
Yeah, Tunnel Webster Plan Board considered a request by applicant Josh Palmer of Vital Signs to change the color of an existing building mounted sign and an existing monument sign in, in the addition of a second building mounted sign. Bunce's neighborhood food and drink located at two-two-three-five Empire Boulevard on a two-point-oh-nine acre parcel, having guest table number zero-seven-eight, point-two-zero-dash-one-dash-five-six-point-one-one. The plan board classifies a proposed action as type-two, action under section six-seventeen-point-five-C two of the state law, and will follow new regulations, and therefore not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Cosel.
I just have a question, is this for the second building mounted sign? I thought they had to go before the, the, the other one next week to get approved, or did they already do that?
They're going to zoning board next week.
Are we approving that one today, too?
The city's covered, but they don't approve it. Yeah, but I guess the thought would be, if the board chooses to approve it, we gotta condition.
It's only getting appearance.
Right.
No, we're back.
Right now, this is secret. You're right, this is still secret, so let's finish that first.
And also, Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Krishani.
Hi.
Okay. Want to make a motion for any couple of them, and then you can put in their stipulation that we're gonna work to begin until it's necessary, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bunce's sign that's located at two-two-three-five, uh, Empire Boulevard, uh, for, uh, a lot of color changes in monument sign and to, uh, and on the monument sign there, they will put the street address on there. And, um, the second building mounted sign, and this is approval for that, if it passes the zoning, the CBA, they're...
Something getting approved.
Yeah. It's a start until they get all the necessary.
You have anything? You ready to do?
Mr. Cosel.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Krishani.
Hi.
Thank you very much, sit down. Have a nice night. You too.
Farmers Insurance sign located six-seven-four Ridge Road, at the, for red sign, and by new services, requesting sign approval to allow sixteen, uh, sorry, eighteen square foot building mounted sign and a one-point-eight square foot panel for replacement on an existing monument sign for Farmers Insurance on a point-six-eight acre, uh, point-six-eight parcel located in NC media and fancy commercial district of the Golden Tower, Webster.
Anyone here for this? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead and answer.
Five-seventy-Fun Road, Telecommunications Power Generator.
Is that? Well, why don't we, we'll keep going, at the end we'll table at the end, this way if the person comes in, you can still, you know, if not, it's a good point to remember, you know, at the end, go ahead, I'll try.
Five-seventy-Fun Road, Telecommunications Power Generator, located five-seventy-Fun Road, at the American Power Corporation to request, to request the preliminary final site plan approval to allow the installation of an emergency backup generator in the exist, at, an existing telecommunication tower on a point-one acre parcel located in our two single-family residential district of the Golden Tower, Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello, good evening, uh, my name is Jeff Skolnick, I, uh, work for Navis Building Consulting, as you have, at American Power. Uh, American Power has an existing cell tower at five-seventy-Fun Road. Uh, what they're looking to do is to put in an emergency backup generator. Uh, there's no backup power there at the moment. Uh, the generator will be shared by any tenant that's on the tower. Uh, currently, T-Mobile, um, is the one looking to tap into this generator, but it will be available for any tenant that's on the tower. Um, it's a concrete pad, eight foot by six foot, with the generator sitting on top. Um, it's a diesel generator, there's a three-hundred gallon tank underneath the generator with overfill protection and double wall fleet protection. Um, it's remotely monitored, um, so it can be fired up, uh, remotely as well as monitored, uh, for any leakage. Um, and that's, that's pretty much what we're looking to do, is it goes within the existing fenced-in compound, uh, at the base of the tower.
And this, what is this used for, what, what does it generate, obviously, electricity, for, what purpose?
Uh, basically, if the power goes out, um, the network needs to stay intact, uh, so this keeps the power to the existing telecommunications equipment on site. Uh, so it's only used in case power goes out, it's a backup generator. Uh, it's not gonna fire all the time, they do test it once a month, uh, for about five minutes, just to make sure it runs, uh, but outside of that, it wouldn't run unless needed.
You know, are, are the neighbors here regarding this?
Some of my neighbor.
Some of your neighbors do, okay, so why don't we do this, before we, you know, let them, let them hear it? Um, I know some of you live, obviously, nearby there, so if, if you want us to stay, you know, you have a comment on it, all we ask is go up, uh, to podium, gives you an opportunity to address, uh, what your concern is, okay?
Uh, my name is Jeff Wheeler, six-thirty-five Drum Road. Work right the same elevation as the pad or the cell tower. My concerns are, where's the discharge for the exhaust for the generator, the noise that'd be generated by the generator? It's an eight-foot board-on-board, eight-foot board-on-board fence, they're now, and we tend here, there is a generator, had a generator in the existing buildings, is that still in use? Uh, yeah.
Why do this?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm, what my question is, there is a generator, had a generator, just direct it here, you can ask the questions, you can note them, and then when you're done, you can address them, okay? So, there is, or had, then, a, a generator in the, uh, concrete structure there, the house, and some of the telecommunications, uh, equipment there, so is this redundant to that generator? Um, it said, I was told that the generator will run for approximately five minutes once a month, is that accurate? And then, um, what is the, any sort of mitigation for the sound of the generator running? Uh, what time will that exercise take place?
Thank you. Well, it's all fresh, do you want to address that, should?
Sure.
You want me to?
Uh, for, as far as the existing generator, I'm not sure that they're not, that was, the shelter that's there is for Verizon. Um, my company actually works for all the carriers, I have a little familiarity with it. Uh, Verizon shelters sometimes will have a generator inside their shelter. Um, this is a shared generator, it's going to be owned by American Tower for any other carrier there. If Verizon does not have their generator there, they may have taken it out, uh, this generator can be shared by both Verizon, T-Mobile, and whoever else comes to this tower. Um, I, I don't know if Verizon still, because it would be a private, own generator, if Verizon still has it within their shelter. As far as this generator, uh, the eight-foot fence that's around there will protect this, this is not higher than eight feet. The exhaust goes straight up, it's, it's basically a cabinet, uh, the generator is enclosed within a cabinet that sits on top of the fuel tank. So it looks just like a square foot, uh, about three-and-a-half feet wide, about eight feet tall, about seven feet long. Um, so everything is self-contained within the cabinet itself. Um, you know, no, is there, you know, there probably will be some noise, but again, it's a contained, enclosed unit, um, and it's not gonna fire, like I said, um, unless needed. Um, the testing is normally done during the day, uh, during the week. Um, and again, that's only a maintenance once a month, just to make sure it's gonna fire when you want it to fire.
Yeah.
I think that was, I really...
I, I have a question, if that thing runs for three or four days in a row, are you gonna be having diesel fumes across the whole neighborhood?
Um, well, uh, it, it's meant to run in case of a power outage.
Sometimes every four or five days long, sometimes, and that's...
It, I mean, I don't know, it, it possibly could, I won't say it won't, but hopefully within three to five days, whatever the problem was, it's fixed.
How come they, how come they use diesel rather than natural gas?
Diesel is predominantly used on almost all of their sites, it's readily available, it's, it's easy to use. Most of these generators are designed to run on diesel, um, it's a little more cost-effective, um, that, I mean, that's standard, basically, for what they use. They will use natural gas at some sites if there's no access to, uh, diesel, or if they're in a highly sensitive weapons-type area, or they'd be concerned about, uh, a possible spill. Uh, this area doesn't have that.
Is there, you said it's a three-hundred gallon tank, is there a shop like a diesel fuel? I mean, it'll just sit there forever?
Um, again, that's, I, that, that's a good question, I really don't know that, uh, that would be part of their maintenance. Um, I would think if there is, they would want to maintain that and make sure that it's, you know, the whole point of this generator is to have it functioning in an emergency, so you don't want things like that to hold you up, uh, when the emergency arises. Uh, so it's standard maintenance, American Power has these generators on thousands of sites across the country. Um, again, predominantly diesel generators, so they've worked out all the bugs and the maintenance schedules and things of that nature.
Now, I'm just, just, if you're running for five days in a row, you're gonna have to use a few...
The, uh, from what I know, the three-hundred gallon capacity for this type of generator, it's a meat kilo-on generator, uh, three-hundred gallons is only gonna run for forty-eight hours. Uh, that doesn't mean they wouldn't fill it up again, yeah, it's, it's a forty-eight hour runtime.
Do you think that it's tested, uh, once a month, to, to see if everything is operating?
Yeah, uh, basically, they, in headquarters, they just flip the switch, it runs for about five minutes, they can monitor it from remotely, uh, that's just to make sure that things are running, uh, that there's no problems.
The reason, the reason I question is, I have a friend who works in business, has a diesel generator, and it runs on a Saturday for ten minutes or whatever, make sure that it's not fully operational. So if you said five minutes or something like that, right?
Yeah, approximately five minutes, I mean, it's not, I mean, the testing is just to make sure it's gonna function. Uh, they're not gonna run it more than five, eight, ten minutes, but at the tops. I mean, I've been on site four where they fire it up, um, it, it doesn't run very long.
Is there a plan in, in the works that the test, uh, happens and, uh, there's no reaction at all in the generator, in other words, do you have a crew or someone sent out to the, you know, site to check the generator?
If, uh, yes, they would have someone available to check it out, uh, again, that's the whole point of a generator, the testing is to make sure it's gonna work. If it's not gonna work, then they have contractors that they can send out to the site and figure out what the problem is. They can, like I said, they can monitor all that remotely, um, so if it's not gonna work, they'll know that, and they'll send someone out to take care of it.
I'm sure they know why it broke and down and left there after they put thousands of dollars in. It serves a purpose, and then again, it's for emergency use only, it's not the running of the program all the time, it's just, you mean, it's same as a home generator is. They're tested periodically, they're right next to the house, next door to them generally, they're on the side of the house. Um, they're quiet, relatively quiet, like a car, it's not anything, it's some, some major farm tractor running out there, and, uh, what keeps it going, I guess? You know?
Nobody wants their cell phone to stop working in emergencies, so that's what this is for.
I can understand a diesel generator in remote areas where natural gas is not available. But in this area, natural gas is running abundantly available. And, and I go along with John saying, if it's running for three to four or five days, we're gonna get fuels from the diesel. Well, you know, fuels are coming from diesel, eventually, no matter what. So I, I think certainly the idea of having a generator is very, very important. Electricity without you, I don't think it'll work, especially for words, but I don't think that we need a diesel generator. And gas is really bad. Which one, which one is louder, Jeff, uh, Dave? Which one costs us more, Dave?
Diesel.
You don't be sure of that?
Well, it's now.
See, you're thinking that, we don't know that, so that's probably not factual, we don't know. They use diesel because they're dependable?
And it's cheaper.
Cheaper, is it right?
That's what he said.
I don't think it's any cheaper to run, decent fuel cost, more than gasoline. Okay, it's back there where they got it located, that's what they use, I don't, I don't wanna get into... I'm more concerned with, I'm more concerned with the other issues of, you know, what it's, what it's looking like, how it's being enclosed, and so on and so forth, as opposed to what kind of gas we use in it. And again, I, my guess is you probably would never see it run for three or four days. That would be an extreme emergency.
Yeah, true.
How often does your electric go off, a day, hours? When's the last time it went off for three days around here, three or four days, you know? And if that did happen, and they had it running, so be it, it's not like it's a, it's a monthly program. I don't have an issue with that, unless the weeks and nights are just, uh, personal things. Anyways, anyone else, and a lot of people, I guess, you can hand it up? Yes, sir?
My name is Ed Varga, I live on six-ten Drum Road, that's, uh, like three doors down from where the cell tower is, cell tower is right behind the church. And, uh, I don't think the generator is necessary for my voice complaint wise, because that's a heavily wooded area, that's like glass wooded area in that neighborhood, and everything just echoes in that back neighborhood. And, uh, I work in Xerox, and they have, uh, emergency generators run ten minutes every month, so once a month, ten minutes. And, uh, also there's, uh, margin, uh, substation, hundred, hundred-fifty feet away, and I haven't, I lived there almost thirty years, and I've never lost power once, so I don't think this is necessary at all. I, I've had this from a voice complaint, I don't think, and I've never lost electricity.
Very short, thank you. Anyone else, Chris, just, just me?
Hello, uh, I also live at six-ten Drum Road, um, I think I had a question, uh, about...
What was your name when you answered, sorry, six-ten?
I'm sorry, Karen Sawyer, six-ten Drum Road. Um, this gentleman over here said that there was a generator there already, is that correct? The one for Verizon? So is there gonna be two generators on this, in this unit, or is the Verizon one gonna be taken out? Is the Verizon one, uh, in use now, um, are we gonna have two going off, uh, multiple times throughout the month? Um, and, you know, like Eddie said, it is, it does echo, noises do echo through our neighborhood and, you know, where we live, so... My question is, is about how many generators on the, or, you know, in that area?
I think you did go through it, thank you. Let, let, go ahead and address it, yeah, I think you said one million of ours, you can represent?
Well, I don't know for sure, uh, typically Verizon shelters, uh, that are basically a concrete, it looks like a trailer, um, and they will have a space for a generator in one of their designs. Um, the design that I looked at on the drawings, uh, doesn't look like a stat design for a generator, but I, I don't know. I, I'm not here to represent Verizon. Um, if Verizon does have a generator, then, yes, this would be the second generator on the site. The generator Verizon has, uh, if it's a typical generator that I've seen before on other Verizon sites, is a smaller generator. It would be within their shelter, and it's only sized to function for their equipment, they also own that. Um, so I, it, it wouldn't be something that would be available to other tenants on the tower. Uh, this generator that American Tower is proposing is, would be proposed as a shared generator for anybody else on the tower, including Verizon, uh, if they do not have a, a generator, or they wish to take their existing generator, if it is there, they wish to remove that, uh, they, they would be able to share. This generator we're proposing is sized appropriately for three to four carriers.
Is there anyone else? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up, any comments? Derek, David? Towers are always an issue, one way or the other, you've got to move the generators. Um, it's part of the overall... And the other thing is, you know, we can, we can even have it in the writing.
Um... In regards to sound, it's reading through the literature that it provided.
Oh.
The structure itself is, it's a sound detecting structure, and it also has, um, silencer heat shield, it also has silencer house on the discharge hood. So it has some silencer on it. So it has silencers built into it, basically, a modular, it reduces a lot of sound, and then the enclosure itself, that, uh...
That's good, I have some to see there, yeah.
So this is, I don't see a difficult one here, but experience with these things myself, it's probably quieter than the one in the backyard, if you're not right.
Okay. All right, um, again, this, this project, a lot would be, just put whatever it's worth, uh... Cell towers have always been a touchy thing, you know, and the reality of it is, well, maybe the one we just approved down on White Road, and what's the, there was controversy on that, and ultimately, they just approved it in the past. The FCC can approve these towers like that. It's almost like they're coming in as a courtesy, we have a restriction for height, like the tower in Webster, according to code, is a hundred foot. A hundred foot tower is not really all that tall, a lot of times you need to have a little taller, when you do, they have to go to get bearings, and so on and so forth. So we do have restrictions on it, but the reality of it is, whether this gentleman came in tonight with paperwork on this, and if we were even say no, I mean, I would see it as an issue, so it would be there. They could go ahead and do this anyways, am I correct with that?
That's correct.
Am I right?
Yes.
So they could be able to do it anyways, whether we like it or not.
It's considered a utility.
That's right.
And therefore some, uh, jurisdiction, at least most of it is, as Mr. Krishani stated, there are some restrictions, uh, placement of height, um, the town, the order of zoning board, the lighting board, for this, uh, speaking, uh, and so on and, uh, problems, as you stated.
And, and all these, and all these, all these companies in the past, I mean, over all the years, I finished the very first tower that came from the town. Every one of those towers had an issue with it, because it was in my backyard, I just can't call it that, but... The companies have always been decent enough to relocate it, to change the style of it, put it in another spot on a different piece of property, close by, somewhere where it would work, so they are cooperative with things like this. It isn't that you just say, oh, that's with you, and we just put it up, they don't do that. It isn't that you just say, oh, heck with you, and we just put it up. They don't do that. So we can get the best we can get from a name in terms of cooperating very much with us. That said, everybody's okay with this at this stage? All right. This is for preliminary and the final, I guess, tonight. That piece for this section, the generator. Yeah, absolutely.
So the generators we just heard.
What's that?
The generator.
Okay.
Town Webster Plan and Board Consider Request by African American Tower Corporation to install an emergency backup generator in an existing telecommunications tower in a zero point one eight acre parcel, having FPL number zero six three one zero four dash one dash one zero point two slash W E B located at five seven zero Clun Road. The Plan and Board Classifies the proposed action as a Type Two action under Section six seventeen point five C nine, stating environmental quality review regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Aye.
All right. Everybody's okay on the floor with the board?
I'll make a motion for preliminary approval. Five seventy Clun Road, power generator, subject to PRC comments. All the frequency specifications for Town Webster. Comply with all requirements by State County and Town Agency. I'll send this over to the number.
It is presented.
Yes, please. That's all.
One second. Make a motion, Mr.?
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Aye.
All right, well. I have a motion for final. And there's nothing else? The other thing, the change, you guys are all set for that, right?
Yes. I have a motion for final approval. I have a subject to telecommunications tower generator. Subject to project review committees. Subject to government regulations. Subject to applicable governmental fees. Subject to Department of Public Works's rules. Subject to construction shall occur within one year. Expiring on January fourth, twenty twenty two. Conditions upon the final.
Speak up.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry? Oh, I can't hear you.
Subject to resolution of final two minutes. Subject to drawing as presented. Make a motion.
Second.
Right, Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Aye.
Okay, that's... I guess we're all set with that. Are you representing the next part too?
I'm here for the next one as well.
Yep, well, there you go then. Five seventy, sorry, five seventy Clun Road telecommunications tower co-location DISH network located at five seventy Clun Road. African DISH Network is requesting preliminary's final site plan approval to allow the co-location and installation of six antenna, one antenna platform mount and associated ground equipment for DISH network within the existing tower area on a one acre parcel located in R dash two single family residential district under Town Webster.
Okay, so we've already established we have an existing cell tower. American Tower owns it. DISH Network is looking to be a new tenant on that tower. Currently, there's two other carriers on there. It's looking to be the third carrier. DISH Network is trying to set itself up across the country as a fourth carrier, basically to replace Sprint that was acquired by D-Mold. There is a typo in the application. It is only three antennas, not six. The plans and the structural analysis are all correct. They both show three antennas. It was just on the application itself. But basically, they're looking to install three antennas on the tower at ninety-four feet. This is a hundred and nineteen foot tower. Six radio units, one surge protector, and a one cable. Concrete pad, or I'm sorry, a metal platform, five foot by seven on the ground within the defense compound, which would house one cabinet and a couple utility boxes. So the tower's not getting higher, nothing's getting larger. It's basically a third tenant to the tower itself within the existing area.
You know what? I don't have any idea what he's doing. If you'd like to take a look at it, you can see the three pieces. He's more likely to take this.
No, they don't live there.
They live. Okay, so pretty... The top of the tower, then the antennas and so on, they're up there. This is below that. There's three, like three discs on each side going around. You saw the dissonance setup. So there's no latification to the tower. It's no taller, nothing like that. This had transmits, no sound, nothing. Pretty simple.
That's what I usually like to say. It's pretty straightforward. Tower's been around, it's already had carriers added to it.
Another one?
Which is what towers like to see. More carriers on one tower instead of multiple towers spread out.
Those three antennas, you might have six radio units?
They radio, okay, so the antennas are panel antennas. They're roughly about, I'm not sure exactly what these are. They're between six and eight feet tall, about a foot and a half wide. So there's three of those. And it's a three-sector tower on three sides. It'll be like a triangle on the tower itself. Each antenna points in a different direction. The radio units are little boxes. They're about fifteen inches by fifteen inches. They're mounted behind antennas. The radio unit is actually what does the transmitting and the receiving. That's where all the technology is located. And then it's sent out as a signal through the antenna. So the radio units are smaller. They're mounted behind it. And then there's one new cable that goes up the tower. Nowadays, they don't run individual coax. It's all hybrid cables. The only reason they used to have to run for, for three antennas, they could be running nine cables. Now they run one. It contains the fiber and the power within the one cable.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone... Should we speak in regard to it? If not, then we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back up. Derek, Ian, Ian?
No.
It's pretty, pretty cut and dry at this point. All right.
As I said, since there's nothing new, existing structure, it's just a big added. It's an affirmative. Town Webster Planning Board Consider Request by African DISH Network co-locate and install three antennas, one antenna platform mount, and associated ground equipment for DISH network within an existing tower area in a zero point one eight acre parcel having FPL number zero six three one zero four dash one dash one zero point two slash W E B located at five seventy Clun Road. The Plan and Board Classifies it as a closed action of Type Two action under Section six seventeen point five C nine, stating environmental quality review regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
One second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Make a motion for preliminary approval. Five seventy Clun Road telecommunications tower co-location for DISH network. Subject to PRC comments. All the frequency you can start at according to specification at Town Webster. Comply with all requirements by State, County, or Town Agency. Approvals are subject to drawing as presented.
Second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Make a motion for final approval for five seventy Clun Road telecommunications tower co-location for DISH network. Subject to project review committee comments. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all applicable governmental fees. Subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the Plan and Board to expire on January fourth, twenty twenty two. Conditions of preliminary final approval are depicted on the cover page of the final design plans. Subject to resolution of final three minutes. Approvals are subject to drawing as presented.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Okay, you're all set?
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Actually, we need to wish that. Ten thirty-five Schuhr Craft Road accessory structure located at ten thirty-five Schuhr Craft Road. African Frank Bell is requesting preliminary final site plan approval to allow the construction of a thirty by forty accessory structure on a one point four three acre parcel under, under Town Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Brian White from McManmood Associates. I'm working with Mr. Frank Bell, who's the property owner of ten thirty-five Schuhr Craft Road. He's looking to obtain approval to construct a thirty by forty flat flat hole barn towards the rear portion of the property. He had an updated site plan sent out Monday showing post contours of existing single family residences on the property as well as, the property was initially, two parcels that were re-subdivided and combined into a single lot this last year, towards the end of November. The initial intent for the property was to construct another single family residence towards the rear of the parcel. Since then, Mr. Bell purchased the property and now wishes to construct a hole barn. Property is of our three residential single families on this.
I guess there's a little bit of, excuse me, a little bit of concern about the drainage and so we wanted to the neighbors and show topless and that, so.
That was the updated plan that's sent out yesterday. Drainage essentially drains northwesterly. That's the actual land for that area. There was no downspouts proposed for the hole barn. So it would just be looted one off with a gravel paper on the edge. It's like, it went off of that, so there's no, discharge onto the joint of property from what exists today.
Yeah, two layers of rock. You see that anywhere in the ground, right?
Right, yeah.
Fifteen feet high, fifteen seven. So what's this going to look like? Ordinarily, it's nice to get material of what you propose to use, but you kind of took that, you know? What is this going to be, a metal siding?
It's going to essentially match existing house. Use show colors, earth tones. And then, you know, essentially plug in with the color of the house.
So in other words, dark, blue, or light?
Yep, lighter, yeah.
Is there going to be any electric, water up to the...
There'll be electric servicing the building. No water or a standard connection, so.
And this is just for personal storage and things like that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And is there anyone, any neighbors that wish to have it in regard to this? Okay, we'll come back up to the board. Anybody? It's pretty simple.
Yep.
Thirty good words. Plenty of room. Wish I had one. Okay. Mark, you'll be with us?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what do you see, Brad?
The Town Webster Plan and Board Consider Request by African Frank Bell to construct a thirty by forty foot accessory structure on a one point four three acre parcel having FPL number zero seven nine, one nine dash one dash one point two one slash one point two two located at three zero, I'm sorry, one zero three five Schuhr Craft Road. The Plan and Board Classifies it as a closed action as a Type Two action under Section six seventeen point five C twelve, stating environmental quality review regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
One second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Make a motion. Make a motion for preliminary approval for ten thirty-six Schuhr Craft Road accessory structure. The lot is restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented on the plan. The question of the building shall conform to all setback requirements. The building shall not be placed where to the front property line and the rear line of footprint of any building or residence upon the lot. No planning of building will be hired in existing structure. No cover shall be used shall occur on the parcel. Accessory building should be used for personal use only as defined by the Town Code. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the Plan and Board to expire on January fourth, twenty twenty three. Comply with all requirements by State, County, and Town Agency. All subject to being compliant with the standards of Town Webster. Subject to all genuine governmental approvals. Subject to all appropriate governmental fees. Subject to resolution of the final two minutes.
Second. Okay, you guys second. Dave, what, what part of the code is that? At the top of that sheet? Yes. And your code, and then you just write off?
Yeah.
What part of the code is that? Do you have two twenty five?
Two twenty five, thirty six.
What is it?
Two twenty five, thirty six.
Two twenty five, thirty six, or thirty?
Thank you. That'll do it.
So, Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Aye.
Make a motion for final approval for accessory building, which is exactly the same as the preliminary approval.
Second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Kash?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. One second. Yep. Seven forty Ridge Road, Gerber, Gerber Lake, located seven forty Ridge Road and forty's Building and Development is requested preliminary site plan approval for construction of proposed twenty seven yard square foot commercial building for used car sales and associated parking lot approving on a thirteen by twenty acre parcel located in the CO Commercial Outdoor Storage District under the Town Webster. Yes, sir?
Evening. My name is Mike Bogacevsky with BME Associates. With me tonight is Beck Heckney from Lefroy's Builders and Joe Williams from Gerber Webster, who are also going to help answer any questions if anything comes up. We're here tonight to request preliminary site plan approval. We're here tonight to request preliminary site plan approval. It is for a closed 2700 square foot car sale building at the current Garber Chevrolet Garber Subaru site. Property address is 7740 Ridge Road. The property itself is, total property is 13.2 acres. As was mentioned, it's in the commercial outdoor storage zoning district. And I will note that the proposed uses, the permitted use in that district. The new building will be located in the eastern portion of the site in the existing parking pavement area. To the east of the Garber Chevrolet building. Once that new building is constructed, the surrounding pavement parking area will be reconstructed and restored to create new parking spaces around it. It does meet all of the setback requirements of the CO zoning district. In addition, basically the second portion of the proposal is to expand the existing parking area to the rear north of the existing buildings. That is just to create some additional car storage for the dealership. It does maintain the required 100 foot buffer to the residential district. Basically does that by proposing the expansion to the east, not any farther to the west or to the north, closely. Currently, there are around 514 spaces on the total site. And with the parking expansion, that'll be increased to 680, as noted on the subplan. For the new building, water and sanitary ladders will be extended to serve that. We are proposing to handle additional stormwater runoff by expanding the existing pond that borders the northern property line of the property currently. That is to handle a portion of the existing pavement and also handle the runoff from the additional pavement of the parking area expansion. In addition to the pond expansion, we are proposing a new bi retention area to provide the required water quality, extend water, necessary water quality treatment for the drainage. We are proposing some additional light poles around the new building. The existing light poles along the front end of the site, along Ridge Road, that will stay. The existing parking area along the north that's supposed to be expanded, does have some additional light poles currently. And then there are a few more that'll be added in the new parking area to cover that area. We're here back in October to review the proposal with the board for conceptual review. We did get the boards in, but one of the concerns was stormwater, which was one thing we wanted to make sure we addressed. There was a question on signage, I know we confirmed with Josh, that I think that was taken care of with the town. And there was a question that came up about the trucks unloading along Ridge Road. And there was some question of whether the existing, you know, parking signs along Ridge were there or not. But we have confirmed those are there, as Josh has also. So I know that was a question that came up during the conceptual review also. We haven't received any other additional PRC comments to date from the town. So with that though, if there's any question from the board, for me or for the rest of the team, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, this morning, at 10 minutes after eight, I went by. There was a trailer truck out on Ridge Road in front of these Subaru cars with the back of it near your driveway. But they were unloading cars there on Ridge Road this morning. There was a Chevy, I think it was a Tabo, on the cylinder truck.
So the team, I think, I mean their intention is to make sure trucks aren't loading on site. But I know Joel here is from Garber Webster that he can hopefully address that.
Thanks for being here, Joel Williams, Garber Chevrolet. In regards to the unloading and trucking, with the state of the inventory and industry right now, a lot of manufacturers have sublet drivers, so we don't have the same normal drivers as we normally would. And I would probably say 20% of the drivers and manufacturers right now are new to the area, which causes them to pull into the road and unload. While in a normal time, you know, next year when inventory is back to regular, 95 to 100% of the drivers will pull into our lot to unload. I definitely did see that truck this morning. But, you know, unfortunately, we can't get out there before they pull off and start unloading. But for, you know, moving forward with the proposed new building, there will be plenty of space for the trucks to unload on our property. In fact, when we did our new pavement for the Subaru site, we did throw some new asphalt down because the trucks do rip up the, right next to the pavement on the Ridge Road as well as our property. So we did also repave that so it's easier on the town.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised to hear that, Joel. Because in the past, I mentioned earlier that you have been putting them inside. They have been driving in and out of the property. So they've been following the rules, so this one must have been a running game.
This was a truck that was from Mannheim, Pennsylvania. So not really, the roots aren't far around Rochester. So it was new to the area, which is why they unloaded it on the road.
Can't catch them all. Just try to do the best, kind of keep them off the highway.
Absolutely.
Drainage, that was a big issue there. You got that covered pretty well, Mark.
Yeah, the, basically, the western portion of the site goes to the existing pond. The eastern portion of the, basically east of the Chevy dealer, the existing parking area drains to the north. It goes to the east property line, basically just goes to the north by pass of the pond. And so what we're proposing to do is install a new storm sewer that directs that runoff to the pond so that it's handled through the pond and not, and it's mitigated that way. And then the new parking area that's being expanded will also be directed to the pond also. So that way the pond's handling a greater majority of the runoff from the site and not versus the original.
Okay. Now, you're just reporting anyways. There's no, didn't have any elevations, can we move on?
We need to have the front of the building.
Okay, that's all right. What you should do, when you come in for final, you want to have complete set.
Complete set, okay.
Have your elevations of the building. I can't see what's on the building, but... What's the front of that building?
Actually, I'm actually kind of talking about what the...
Yeah, there's a push on. Give it a few more seconds. You guys have any thoughts on that? The only thing I can think is if there's any way you can dress that up with some...
So the bottom, bottom course below the windows, that's gonna be like a shoulder, right?
That's bottom material. Yeah, boost that.
And then the upper...
Because it's got, it's a used car area, right?
It's a used car.
Yeah, so it's, yes. Just put some amenities in there to break it off, so it isn't just dragging it out anyway, huh? Okay?
Sure.
And you want to have that when you come in, and you've got the rest of your drawings, okay? Lighting? Lighting and stuff, and we adjust it. Might as well be done with, right?
Yeah, we can quit the lighting plan, and like I said, there's some additional holes around the new building and some additional holes in the parking area to expand it. All elevator fixtures are classified to kind of match with current neighbors.
Again, this is public hearing, if there's any neighbors?
Yes, sir.
Robert Finchwalder, located 1002 Town Lea, which would be the property just to the north of the development as it exists. This is the second time I've been to this planning meeting. First time was previous owner. I lodged a complaint because of drainage and a lack more water flowing into our yard after the previous design. I'm concerned at this point with an enlarged parking lot, which would entail the least amount to be. A larger area that would drain off to some area, route has to go to the north. And that would make the water situation in our backyard a lot worse. Then in the summer, I would say that I can, we can only mow our entire backyard about half the time. It turns out that our, that our yard is, part of it would drain to the southwest. The other part drains to opposite compass point, which I think would be towards northeast. But the yard and the drainage, which was designed by Gerber, who built the house, is left it quite flat. There's really nowhere for the water to go as it is now, the way the grade is today. So once again, I reiterate my problem with this whole thing is that with an enlarged parking lot, I think that our water situation in our yard could be made worse.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think they've modified it, so we'll address it. Thank you.
Like I mentioned, with the, with the additional runoff from the increased impervious area, they're directing that to the pond, but we are making sure to increase, enlarge that existing pond area. A lot of the runoff now currently bypasses that pond and flows to the north. And doesn't go into the pond, it's not, that runoff and just mitigated currently. So what we're proposing to do is make sure that the existing parking area, the new parking area and the parking area around the building, which doesn't go to the pond currently, is directed to the pond. So make sure that that runoff is directed to the pond. And then the flow discharged from the pond are mitigated to a rate that's meeting the existing rate. The bi retention area will provide that treatment, but it also helps to promote some infiltration in the ground before it gets to the pond. And part of the pond expansion is increased volume to handle this runoff and also constructing a new outlet structure to replace the existing one there that I think, just from walking up there and looking at it, needs some repairs currently. So hopefully with the increased volume, new outlet structure that's designed to handle the runoff from the site, will have to mitigate some of these drainage areas down through the pond also.
I see you're a 25 foot wide spill. But where's the neutral outlet structure? See the four bayed equal? Four bayed. See an intersection for a light that looks like it's going to the upper, is that actually that?
The discharge is on the north side.
So even though this pond is a larger retention area, chokebacks are closed, still the same quantity of flow to the north. Where does the whole, I kind of remember this came up.
Well, this was an issue way back when Doyle's had it. When they put the other addition in, the building on the west side there from the Subaru, yeah. This was an issue with drainage, and they're supposed to have been correcting.
Yeah, so while the pond itself, its function is designed to take in a certain amount of flow, chokeback, probably still the problem.
Is there a swell?
Yeah, you still have the same amount of flow on the pool. Comes in and goes out, so it doesn't really address anything. This area is flooded with water, because of the problem of our area. Like you got the pond, which is really...
It'd be the gray ranch that is the...
Is there a way to tie in some sort of drainage system?
I don't believe there's any, I don't think there's any way to... When you brought the discharge from the pond, it basically goes to the north, north point, northeast of that flooded area. The existing, look on the existing condition plan, it shows the existing location of the current public structure, current pipe that's been charging.
Seems to me there's a pipe, a large pipe installed there once years ago. I think the town used it all. Because it was an issue. The other question though is, let him back up, Mr. Mr. Wallace House. Is there a swell along the back of your property?
Yes, there is.
There is a swell?
Yeah, there's still...
Does that function?
It, it fills with water because there's an overflow pipe. One of the, probably about this size, which drains down into that area. And when there's melting snow or maybe a half inch or an inch of rain, that overflows into our yard and just creates a little lake in our yard, which, because as I described, it's flat.
Yeah.
It doesn't drain away, it just sits there.
Your backyard is further flat.
Yes.
The part is because of the way that was built, the middle house. Where are the wetlands on this side?
There, there's no, doesn't need a wetland, it's not that...
No federal wetlands? Is it seen in the secret forms of our wetlands in the area?
There, I believe, I believe the EAF member checked the box because there are federal wetlands within the... Just that it checks. I believe that's a TDAW.
So it kind of looks like the drainage is, or it just goes to the back line instead. There isn't any place for it to go.
Why don't we do this? You come back in, you remove the pool area, and then you come back in and show where this water, you know, more detail on where it actually drains to and how, or who that...
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work with, I will say, we'll work with ConStep to confirm basically if there's any other additional options for handling from the stormwater downstream of the pond. Because just from walking the site back there, yes, it is poorly drainage, which is why we wanted to make sure that we're handling the runoff that we can handle with the pond and the stormwater measures that we're proposing. But if there's anything on the northeast options on site that we can, even look at, we'll work with ConStep between now and tomorrow.
You know, Mike, you have a, you answered it at Joe Marapies, the IRE department. Maybe talk to him. No, he's, he had a group of stuff there. Doyle's had it, I think he might have, no, yeah. Let's go up to the whiteboard.
Because our drainage problem is significantly worse, they took complaints and Jeff Benway, who is the engineer, has been able to look at the situation and is aware of the fact that the drainage and the water problem in our yard is much worse now than it was. that the drainage and the water problem in our yard is much worse now than it was, than it was before this other development with Doyle did.
See, over time too, I mean, when this was originally, a lot of those swells going in and maybe become non-functional. And that could be part of the problem bouncing. Because I would suggest we, before we could go there, if it was okay with that, but in the meantime, when you come back and your elevations and stuff, the final approval, you've investigated, it doesn't seem, you come up with better solutions and waters actually flowing.
Yeah, we can work, we can work with the town and the town staff.
I think that would be the best source.
To make sure that we're, to address us that we can do.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
I got some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, go ahead. What was going on, I think we just need to make sure that the situation is. That's it, yeah.
Ron Roman, I live in 902 La Faria Circle, directly behind you, right directly behind him. I was concerned, well, same water problems, there's no such thing as that again, I handle it, same water problems. In my backyard, there is a swell, it looks like the town, this is before I bought it, there's a drain back in there, maybe drained into a pipe, so maybe there's a possibility of looking at, maybe they need a couple more drains into that swell where it goes into the pipe, something to think about.
I'm not sure I'm suggesting.
But I am definitely, like you say, I'm getting a lot more water coming out of the woods and I'm directly behind it. I was curious how far from my property is where your building would be, I know my property, then I hit the town, must have some gateway to there, right? Behind me and then to your property? Because I know I seen a guy's bedroom survey and I'm not sure how close it's going to be, because now you're talking about lights are going to be in a bag which, I can see all the lights now, so I'm sure they're going to be even more hurt if they're coming closer to me because I'm just north of you. So I was wondering how, what kind of the lights and how close you're going to be in my property? And I'm concerned, where is this pond? Because I actually never even seen this pond. Is it on, where does that locate on different? So I was just wondering where that is on the northeast side of the property or directly north of your property? I'm not sure where that pond is.
Directly north of the property.
Right, direct to, right towards my house, you're saying?
What's your interest in that?
902 La Faria, I'm directly behind it.
Right here. It's actually quite a ways. I'll tell you what, just so you can take a look at it, if you'd like to take a look at the sheet, I'll give it to you.
Yeah.
Sure, here, it's where you, you got an idea of it, right? Yeah, that's it.
Just wondering how close, how much closer it's coming to me if it's coming north.
Your house is right here. Your house is right here. Yeah, see, there's a jog in there, a piece right there also. So there's the, I think you can just take that.
Sure. It's quite a distance.
Yeah, it is quite a distance.
It's a walk.
Is there anyone else who should come? There's a jog here.
Hi, I'm Michelle Camacho, I live at nine.
Hey, can you hear me? Lower the microphone a little bit. There you go.
Hi, I'm Michelle Camacho, I live at 996 John Neal Drive. I want to get my bearings, I think I'm, yeah, so my property is right here. So I can give you a little bit of information, there's a pipe, so between, there's a pipe actually on my neighbor's here for drainage. The problem is, this is beyond the lane and the elevation of beyond the lane is kind of low. We've already had maybe five years ago, someone from the highway department looked to see if they can improve the drainage because since there's an easement, we wanted to do something ourselves and they said that, you know, we have the town involved. And because beyond the lane is so low, I candid and get, basically the drainage pipe is higher than my property and they said maybe I'd be a candidate for a French drain, but they looked at the soil and they said there's too much clay, so the French drain can't work because of the clay. And I believe that this gentleman said that in addition to the.
Go back over to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I need to repeat it again please?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, since there's too much clay for a French drain, I thought he said that part of the plan of the pond is something about letting the water percolate into the soil, so I'm wondering about the clay content and if that's going to make that plan more effective. Let's see. I was glad that you're, are planning to do something about the water, but I have some other questions too, actually not related to water. Although right now I'm sure if I'm my neighbor, we have like a little, now that it's cold, a little frozen pond all along that, that bath and then it's pretty constant. I was wondering, I know that he said that there's going to be a hundred feet of the wooded area, I don't know, are any of these trees going to be removed, but we don't want, we were worried about privacy and.
It shows trees to be remained.
All of the trees are going to remain?
Well, it's showing on the drawing, trees to remain.
Okay. I think that that was mainly, and I was worried about, you know, privacy or increases of traffic if it was more safe. And can you just show me like where the new, is the darker area the new, are there not?
To the east of what's existing.
So, and how about this darker gray area here?
A sliver, just a, un, actually.
And is there, so again, for safety, is there going to be, is all of that going to be really well lit? Like at night, we talked about the use of lighting. That's the, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Roman, I live at 902 La Faria Circle. And I was just wondering, what is the background? It sits right in my backyard, right now I sit outside in the backyard. Vital signs is right here, this big blue building. Next to it, this company with storage containers all day up, drop in these heavy storage containers. And now we're going to cover it. So when I sit outside, I sit in a commercial area. So is there going to be anything done, back of that building, you know, put up any trees, you know, shrubs to, make it look nice?
That building is a long way away.
Don't they?
But yeah, when you've been through the woods, there's a parking lot.
That building is aligned with the, with the Chevrolet.
What do you call a long ways away? It's not that far.
Okay, hold on, we're not going to start getting into this.
You say a long way?
Code says that area is commercial, that's commercial, number one. Number two, yours is an R3 residential. The code also says that there has to be a hundred foot buffer, meaning open space on the commercial property away from the residential. That does exist. So everything, when people build a house next to a commercial piece of property, they choose to build it there and that's just the nature of the world here. So I understand what you're saying, but.
Yeah, because all of this is still people bought the house.
Yeah, I hear you.
And the lighting, we're going to have a lot of lighting.
Their lighting will make sure, we're making it that the lighting faces towards this way, you know, towards the south, towards our, the lights won't affect you guys.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll do that.
Okay, let my question start.
That would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
If you don't care what we say.
What's that, I'm sorry?
So just to follow up on a question. There are, there actually is, but the trees.
Oh, up there. Yeah, well, that's, that's.
Yeah, there are areas where trees are, the roof ain't on it. There also is, because there's a lot of trees, but it's within parcel area, it's outside.
Would you mind, could you just point on the map where the trees are being removed?
Most of them are on the main parcel, outside.
Oh, I see, okay.
There is, there is a portion of this already cleared along the eastern property line and the, the main portion of the site is already cleared, the parking area is, there is a sliver of trees just along the eastern corner of that new parking area that would require some trees to be removed. But that's it. Even the, the pond expansion, we're trying to maintain the tree line and the berm itself and then expand to the south, we're not going to go anywhere with that pond expansion.
I just wanted to point it out. There are notes on the drawings of basically trees are being made.
Yeah, we try to clarify the areas that will remain, there is a portion of trees to be picked up for building, yeah.
Just to clarify.
Biggest, biggest concern we've got with the project is building a drainage in there and check water. Some, some landscaping along the back that could put a few trees could be put in there if there's a spot, if we were, if that's something we can deal with when we come back in. You're, you're, you have some tow roads on here, you have two men. Actually, it's small vehicles. But I would check with the, I would check with the heavy department and see if they have some knowledge of how that water's going. Seems to me like one of the ladies mentioned about a pipe being back there, I remember some pipe being put in there as well.
Well, the, the problem is that the pipe doesn't drain, it doesn't take the water away north, something with how the elevations were done when it was first constructed wasn't done correctly. So if they didn't tie into it, we'd expect it to take it away.
That's, yeah, that's something we'd have to get information from the town, from, like I mentioned, the, our, our main goal was to make sure we're dealing with any runoff from the project itself and if there's any opportunity for any additional stuff downstream of the pond, that's something we can definitely look at, if there's any opportunities onsite to try to mitigate some stuff.
So can we say the goal here would be the drainage doesn't flow out of your property from this property, actually big as it is, it fills the whole way, essentially theoretical, that's what we, this mission is about, all right? Okay? Last we come there. All right. Anything else you want to cover? Pretty good shape. I knew that was going to be an issue right from the beginning. I even mentioned to you one day I came in, remember?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we're upset. If we do a preliminary area in this, this is basically a site.
First, I'd rather pull it off.
Pull it there and file, do it all?
I'd rather see.
Gives you nothing.
How homework is done, what we define by, what the research.
What the board considered doing, a preliminary final approval at once, once we've kind of addressed the comments?
Okay, we do that.
Just to reiterate, this is not an infiltration comment.
No, I will, I can, I can address that question, the, the fire retention area is meant as a filtering practice because some of the soils are poorly drained, wherever that.
And your deep pool area is almost like.
The deep pool area is, is basically just seventy feet. Is just basically standing water, that's to maintain water elevation, that's seventy feet of depth, provide the necessary water quality. That's, that's pretty standard pond design with the DVC regulations.
Okay, so what we'll do, we'll, we'll leave the public hearing open, we won't close it. Just wait here, when he comes back in, if there's any comments or if he has a different question or something, it's still being addressed, okay?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, for the procedural, I'm not familiar with how the procedures go, did you say that they're first going to do a drainage plan and then later it would be the preliminary?
Hold on, what we're asking them to do when they come back in, their approvals, is to have a better, a better drive, better understanding of where's this water going and how is it going to go without flooding it. It's got to be some design, but where there's some things that question, how does it flow and where does it go? Once it leaves this piece, you know?
So we'll get one of those postcards in the mail the next time that's.
I don't know if you sent it out, no, I don't think we did, no, but it'll be published, it'll be in the paper. It's on the website. You know, some, they sent about all that, did they?
No, only the initial.
Yeah, just the initial.
Well, you didn't set a time anyway. That would be my question, would, would we be tabled till the next planning board meeting, what to address the comments and come back?
Eighteen. So you want a table?
Request a table, and then what to address the comments?
Now, do you anticipate having a split prepared at this point?
The, this, this book we could, we could have submitted, we'll have to work with you and town staff to make sure we're addressing comments, but I'm just looking at the procedure leave whether, if the fourth and table it, do we come back next board meeting or do we have to, to schedule that with you?
You're telling me that you have the split submitted and give town staff a little bit of time to review prior to the eighteen and I will be fine with that, otherwise I would think that I'll run through that.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just wondering. Or whether, whether it gets tabled and we, then we work with you to, I mean, when we move to come back. Yeah, we can do that.
Why don't we do that?
So you request we be tabled to?
We'll request to be tabled and then we'll work with, with Josh on.
Okay, so we'll set it for eighteen?
Setting the next planning board. Okay. And then if that, and then if there's anything that comes up where we can't, if there's additional comments, then we, so.
I'm just wondering, table it to the third group, to January eighteen? All fair?
Who is that, Tom? January eighteen?
All right, we're good. Thank you.
The next planning board meeting.
January eighteen.
Yep.
Western Golf Course, addition located 440 South Road. Get plan due for starting on 3,800 square for additions in existing runoff building for six, all facility stations down at 58 and 3000 parcel, located in Melville, large flexing community residential district on the county town website.
Sure.
No, there's nothing going on way up at the front. No, no, it's up here, close to.
I'm the people here and I'm the. Western Golf Course.
Excuse me, did you guys, you want to add something?
And this is a request for sketch plan approval to build a four tons and four foot building attached to the southeast. to build a four thousand square foot building attached to the southeast end of the clubhouse. This building is to be used for, uh, six simulator stations, which are, uh, areas that are used for practicing, um, golf swings and, uh, social gatherings. The building is, this is Salt Road, this is north. The existing building, uh, the clubhouse is here, simulator building is in the south of the clubhouse. And surrounding building is a parking lot, and then there's, everything else is, is golf course.
Yeah, actually, you can see a pretty good, uh, drawings of the image.
Uh, I do have some, there's just two images that if I could, I could pass it up to the board. This is what I just used to simulate, simulating this is all about, if I could, if I could do that. So each one of these, uh, stations is about eighteen feet wide by twenty feet deep, and about twelve feet high. And it's basically an open room, and about two feet from the back wall, uh, there's a projection screen, and it's projector, and the projector can show an image of any golf course in the world today, and it, it can be Webster Golf Course, or St. Andrews, or wherever. And what happens is, is that you, um, about eleven feet from that projector screen is a tee, and you, you drive the golf, uh, ball into that screen, and there is a, it's called a track man mechanism, that actually, uh, tracks the ball as it hits the screen, and it, it actually, um, shows an image of the trajectory of that golf ball as it goes down the fairway. But in addition to being able to see that, if, there's a lot of analysis that you get from that, you can, uh, basically, it's a teaching tool really, because, uh, a trainer can help you develop your swing, and you can monitor how you're, how you're swinging at golf ball. It can, uh, monitor the spin of the ball and the trajectory of the ball. So it's, it's a very useful thing. Um, it's become very popular even in the Rochester area. Uh, there's one at, at Dick's Sporting Goods, or Dick's Sporting Goods store on Victor, but there's other ones around, and, uh, what's, what's good about it is for the Webster, uh, golf courses that, uh, this will prolong the use of, of, of the golf course really during winter as well as during the summer months. So it's, um, it's, it's a beneficial aspect to the, um, to their offerings as a, as a golf club. So, do you have any questions?
So, can I, what's, what's the narrow part, just the entrance going in and out? It's connected to the existing building?
This, this right here, okay, so back in here, um, there's a banquet hall right here. You kind of walk through there and get to the building. It does have to be some control, if you want people coming in and from all, all over the place, but there is an entrance over here, and then through the, through the main, uh, building as well.
I don't see it as an issue, hey, it helps, it helps the business over there as a golf course, and maintains it, and stays as a golf course, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Before somebody starts building houses again.
Well, they've been doing quite a good golf course. Elevating it, uh, to a really significant golf course. And this is going to bring in a lot more business.
This business.
Which is good for everybody.
And it'll provide, uh, you know, may, may anticipate, the big honor is to them is, anticipate having, you know, social events, they can have parties that center around, you know, different, uh, uh, you know, golf courses in the, in the world for that matter, you know, Hobble Beach, or, uh, I guess it's St. Andrews, whatever, they can, they can shift these images, and they can have parties around those, those things. So it should be a lot of fun, but it's also helping the golf club to, uh, sustain itself during the winter months, which is difficult for golf clubs.
Did you say there was another facility like this in, uh, our area?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Did you say there was another facility like this in our area?
Yeah, Dick's, Dick's Sporting Goods at, at Victor, uh, they have, uh, they have two of them.
Have they noticed an increase in the number of, uh, people coming?
That I don't know, but I, I do know that, um, where, where they have been put in, they've been very well accepted.
Yeah, this is something that, that's been a major attraction. I mean, I, I know my daughter goes to Greece, but being able to hit balls into something like this all the way along, they have recovered. So I, I, I see this as being a really, really good thing.
Actually, it's a real ancillary use to what's there.
Well, that's true, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's really fascinating to see, uh, someone use this too. If, uh, I was at the Dick's Sporting Goods, uh, store when, when there were a couple guys using it, and, uh, you, you hit the ball, and, I mean, the ball just smacks against the screen, and, but you can try it as hard as you want, and, and as soon as it hits the screen, the, the, the yellow trajectory shows just where you hit that ball, and it's, it's really pretty fascinating. But, you know, for people that are trainers, um, they can look at the analysis, because this all, this is all, um, electronically coordinated, that they can look at it, and they can help, uh, you know, analyze your, your follow-through and every aspect of your, your game.
That's great. Okay.
We're out of curiosity, if anything else. Why not decent letters or rectangular little bits, three on the side? I just look at the layout, we got to match it, it gives, gives a building interest, but it's, it's basically just a dual.
Actually, most of it is because of the structure of the building. If we, we actually look at a building that's actually just a box, you know, six, three on one side, two on the other, but by doing it this way, we're able to use smaller trusses that run along here, and then intersecting trusses that run along here. So the trusses are smaller, uh, they can be transported easier, and the scale of the, of the building is smaller. Instead of being a big box, it's broken up.
Thanks, Ed. Just curious.
Yeah, it's pretty much here. All right.
I'm in favor.
I just have a quick question for you, Ed. It appears that it's proposed to go on an existing parking lot. Uh, is there any thought being given to expanding or adding in parking spaces that will be moved as a result of this?
Um, there, there isn't at this time, but if, if that situation comes up, there is the capacity to be able to extend the parking lot to the side. Anyhow, I think, uh, you know, that parking lot is, it's, uh, kind of a mix between a cage and private lot.
Yeah, right.
So, and, and there is, um, you know, the, the drainage that's there, we plan on being able to tap into that existing, uh, store for initiatives that already there with such, such reasons.
I'm sure if they do that kind of business, that volume of business, that you have to take all the pieces of, of, yeah, and put later.
We're, we're, we're trying to, uh, really look at the parking situation to see if there's, uh, if we need to, you know, expand that. At this time, you know, the only thing that they, they will have a problem, but, um, you know, when we go to the final, uh, planning approval, uh, we'll try to address that a little more.
What you can do is mark on there, uh, if necessary, you know, for future expansion, just-
Yeah.
We've done that, CVS did that, uh, there's several businesses have done that. That open quality, I'll let them come back and do it either.
Well, hopefully, hopefully we will have to.
I know, that's what I was saying.
Well, I think this is going to be a major interest. Of course, they got a huge park. And, and during the winter, you're not going to have a parking lot full of golfers, so you shouldn't be punting your own park.
Yeah. When you go to that, then you propose to come back in the next meeting, or?
Well, I, I think I need to review, uh, the next stages with Josh.
Okay, what's your, what's your note here?
After, after we go for, uh, the, uh, zoning approval, then we go for the final. But we want to, we want to keep the ball flowing, no, no, not intended.
Okay, dude. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you, Tom.
Um, before we close, we need to, uh, for farmers, we need to get motion to-
Take a motion to, uh, table the farmer's, uh, insurance sign to January the eighteenth. Second, second?
That's it. All paid?
Aye.
Okay, guess that's it. Thanks, Ed. Done for the night, thanks for coming in. All right, hold on. Is that?
Uh, that's it. I didn't like it.
It's going to be you, yeah.
Oh, well.
Did I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is farmer's, there's your table, this is-
My counter.
Also, this is, yeah.
Yeah, right, that's right. Yeah, yeah, Josh is going to be here.
All right, all right. Make a motion to approve the, uh, this is our current summer, certainly. Sorry. Make a motion to approve the, uh, summer thirteen, that's what's that? Second.
All paid?
Aye.
Was that, did you say you were gonna? I said by nine o'clock.
But I agree, basically, updated status.